All right, well, it is five o'clock. So, thank you so much, everybody, for being in attendance this evening. We know it is the end of the day and everybody's trying to get home or just start work and unwind, get family situated. So, thank you again for being here. So, this is our superintendent town hall for this evening. Just a few housekeeping roles. Everybody is listed as an attendee. So, everybody you see on the screen is considered a panelist. We will be presenting to you this evening. If you have any questions, please type them in the Q and A portion of the Zoom, or you can do it in the chat, but it would be easier for me to collect the information. If we put it in the Q and A portion, we will collect them. And then, just like last time, we will send them out once the questions have been answered. Let's see, and I will bring up, give me one more second so I can share my screen. All right, and now I am going to introduce our fearless leader. So, Dr. Hernandez, you have the floor. You're on mute, sir.
Yes, I am on mute, but no longer am I on mute. So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us tonight for our superintendent town hall. There's a slew of information we're going to share with you this evening. And then, of course, I've got one big announcement that I'd like to make at some point this evening with regards to all of our employees in the district. But I want to go ahead and be expeditious in this evening's information and go ahead and establish the information that we're going to be sharing tonight. So, if we'll go to the next slide. So, as always, we do try to start just like we would in the classroom on what items you're going to be hearing about tonight. So, we have five guiding principles of information that we're going to discuss this evening. Obviously, the first and foremost is that being accurate and timely in our communication. Obviously, communication is a big deal these days. Information is very fluid most days because there's a lot going on, not just in our school district, but in the school districts around us and in our greater city as a whole. You're going to hear about health and safety updates in the district in terms of items that we are working on, items that we are continuing, and any new information that we may have received from our state officials. We're going to talk to you a little bit about our commitment to continuity in mental health and well-being of our employees, also by high-quality instruction in terms of what we're doing. I'm sure you read the papers just like I do. We do have a challenge in front of us in terms of many students here in Bear County, but across the state that are experiencing higher rates of failure. And so, that is obviously something that we will address and do not have the luxury of not addressing. And obviously, we also have a moral commitment to that as educators. And then, finally, we're going to talk about educational equity. And you're going to hear a little bit about our innovation updates as well as also a refresh program that we now have with our laptops and technology equipment, which we have, we're going to be talking to you about this evening. That is well thought out over the next three to five years. So, it's good to see that we are planning for years ahead so that we ensure that we have the equipment that our students need, but that you need also is our staff in the district. So, go ahead, Ms. So, as always, our number-one outcomes still remains the same. Our number-one outcome is to make sure that all students are ready to graduate, ready for college, the career, career or military by their expected date of graduation. So, obviously, that has taken, these days, that's taken on a different look because, obviously, the challenge we have in front of us is a grand one. As we try to continue to make sure that our students are ready to graduate and that they're ready to walk the stage. You saw our graduation last year was at the stadium, beautiful event. But we definitely have to make sure that our students are ready to graduate, not just this year, but in the future years to come. And so, obviously, that's been a challenge, but a challenge is a challenge, and we've got to proceed forward because that's the commitment that we take as people in education. So, we'll keep that going. So, let's talk about where we are right now as a school district and where we are right now as a community. And so, if you probably recall this slide, maybe some change in the pictures. But back in the late spring, early summer, I talked to you a little bit about our challenge. And obviously, the elephant in the room is that COVID has continued to expand. It goes up, it comes down, and right now, I know we're experiencing an increase in positivity rates in the city. I'm going to talk about that a little bit. But obviously, our challenge continues in terms of our response to the pandemic. Over the last few months, you've seen things happen like our food drives because food insecurity still remains in our district and everywhere. Now, you're starting to see it with individuals that were considered the working class that are now experiencing food insecurity. And then, as a school district, we're having to support them and just meeting their basic needs. As teachers, you have answered the response of both in-class and virtual instruction, which is not an easy one. I understand that is a huge weight on your shoulders, and that is not something that I take for granted. That is not something that our board takes for granted. And I think most of us know that that is a huge challenge. The teachers and the teacher assistants, principals, custodians, everybody that works on a campus is caring. But I also want to advocate for our people in central office, too, because they, too, are carrying that challenge and that many times they're working on weekends as well to create lessons and videotape things that are going to support you in the classroom. So, I want to make sure that I acknowledge everybody's contribution because, quite frankly, it takes all of us to make this happen. So, that's where we are in terms of the challenge at this point. But there are some factors that I think that as the superintendent, we can go ahead and go, Ms. Olga, that I want to bring and share with you. Because one thing I've always said is that I want to be as transparent as I can with you. Obviously, there is a lot of, there's a lot of information that I, as the superintendent, am privy to. There's a lot of factors that go into decisions-making. But right now, I know you're probably asking yourself, what's going to be the district response and as a result of the positivity rate in the district? So, I want to sort of frame the conversation and the rationale for my decision because my decisions, although I am the lead officer of the district, there are other factors that I have to consider and that sometimes I have to be out in front and protect us as a school district and you as a member or as a colleague of mine, because that's how I consider you, to make sure that today's decisions don't come back and bite us later in terms of in the spring or as we go into the next legislative biennium. So, with that being said, I want to talk about the picture you see on the right. The legislative session begins next month. And so, our legislative session creates budgets that are aligned for two years. So, that's why it's called a biennium. So, they will be passing a budget that we will have to work with over the next couple of years. And of course, today, we have our governor and our Texas Education Agency, who are the individuals that give us the direction and the requirements that we are asked to fulfill as a school district. So, obviously, right now, having students in school and educating them is at the forefront of what we do. It is the expectation of what we do. And recently, because there are so many students that are failing, the mandate has been that we have those students in our schools learning so that they don't fall behind further as a result of the pandemic slide. So, that is a factor that I cannot ignore as the superintendent because it is directly tied to funding. And so, I want to be honest with you. I don't know what else to be than to be honest about the factors that I have to take into consideration because this is the information that I share with my board. And these are the things that I hear, I can hear, maybe your connection. Hold on. I see your message, Hector. I'm responding. I hope you can hear me now. And so, those are things that I have to consider as the superintendent and executive officer of the district. So, we can keep going, Ms. Olga. So, yesterday, Dr. Rue here in Metro Health released the state's positivity rates. I'm going to give you a few seconds to read what she just mentioned there. This is basically, this is taken directly off of the information that Dr. Rue shared with us. And so, I want you to understand that the information that she shares with us is considered to be a recommendation, but there are other factors that govern how we, as a school district, function in terms of how we lead our school district and how I, as the superintendent, prepare for us, prepare us for the future. Go ahead, Ms. Olga. As of yesterday, our positivity rate was at 15.7%. It's obviously, you know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm not alarmed. Obviously, I am alarmed, I am concerned. But I still believe, as do many of my superintendent colleagues, because that is my PLC, that is my pod, that is my group of individuals that I go to for deep thinking and deep conversation. We still believe, as do many authorities, that schools are some of the safest places in the state and in our city. So, with that being said, you're going to hear a presentation in a few minutes from our deputy superintendent, Mr. Chavez, who's going to speak to you about what those positivity rates are specifically here in Edgewood. But then, also, through this conversation, I want to reiterate that that positivity rate in terms of us keeping it down in our schools relies on us, too, as members of the Edgewood ISD community. And so, I am asking, appealing, begging, if you want to call that, that you continue to practice safe, healthy practices as you're coming to our schools. I personally believe we are still safer, our students are safer, we're safer at our schools, as long as we continue to wash our hands, sanitize our rooms, wear our masks, and not just our masks, but also our face shields that we provided for you. And we will continue to provide those things. We will continue to deep clean. We will continue to ask members of our transportation team, of our operations team, to come over to the schools during the day and help us with cleaning. We are doing everything possible to continue to mitigate our response to the pandemic while also keeping our moral obligation of helping our students. And I know, Edgewood, I'm asking a lot of you, I know. I know you're afraid. I respect that and I acknowledge that. But these are things that we have to address and that I, and we can't look away from, but we can be smart about what we do because the circumstances we have. Well, you can go to the next thing. The circumstances we have, yes, we didn't choose these circumstances. But I always argue in anything, whether it's this pandemic or in anything that happens in our lives, the circumstances we have are one thing. But how we respond to them is going to be our choice. And so, I think it's worth reiterating what we've been doing as a school district to respond. So, all of that, if you'll change that. I think the first thing we have to continue to do, as you've done, is to stay calm. Be, stay connected, connected to one another, connected to these methods of communication and all the social media platforms that we're using, including mine, to stay communicated. Be flexible in our thinking. Please give us the benefit of the doubt, ask questions. Just today, I got some emails from a few teachers from one of our high schools, which I appreciate the email that we received, that I received personally, asking me to consider and questioning me on some things. I'm okay with that. Some of you have come in to see me early in the morning also to share solutions, but also to say, hey, I just appreciate with everything going on, the other things that the school districts are doing for us. I appreciate all that, and I welcome feedback. I always say, feedback is a gift. I ask you to continue to refuse to be single-minded in your focus, keep an open mind, be a shoulder to lean on, help somebody get through the day or through the moment, sometimes when it gets really difficult. And I want you to continue to understand that we're in this together as a school district. I know I can't, you can't be with me in every decision that I make or at every meeting that I'm at. But I ask you to continue to trust that what I'm doing is always done from a good place. And then, I'm trying to do what's best for our school district and for our kids and for you as members of our community. I no more have control on what happened this year than anybody else, but I surely am working every opportunity in every way that I can to make sure that we respond in a way that is, that has integrity and that uses every bit of communication that I have so that I can bring the best solutions to this group. So, let's keep going. So, what have we been doing so far? We have been sanitizing our schools. We have been asking students to wear their masks to make sure that they socially distance. There have been numerous videos created to show our students and community about how they approximate or come to our schools, or I know right now we're keeping them away from schools, but how they prepare to come. Later on, you'll hear about all the other methods we've added to our arsenal of things. But, and, but obviously, all of that is contingent on how we, as a community, respond and how we support it. I get that the longer that the pandemic exists, it gets difficult, there's fatigue. But we have to recommit ourselves to this work because we've got an obligation to continue to serve our kids. So, let's keep going, Ms. Olga. So, again, we have also, as a school district, continue to provide the PPE equipment and Plexiglas throughout the district. Obviously, we've been working with our principals on what is needed in our schools, and we will continue to do that as we move forward. So, these are steps that the district has proactively taken. Go ahead, Ms. Olga. And then, the greatest one now is that we have extended the COVID testing to all campuses. And so, many of you have already participated and have also expressed your gratitude. But we will continue to ask you to test when we have the testing on your campus. I know this week, we are Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, Ms. Olga, on all campuses this week. So, please be ready, please continue to test. Our little ones are testing, too. So, I ask you that you join the effort and that we continue to do that. You'll continue to go. Just another picture from Community Labs as we continue this work. And then, the last thing I'm going to say before we turn it over to the deputy is, I also want you to know, we have been very, we've tried to be very proactive in our response to the pandemic. So, last spring, when we took the, I believe, the second recommendation to the board for a revised district calendar, you know, we had it in mind that we knew that this time of year would come. Back then, if you recall, a lot of the information we had heard was that in the, in the winter or close to winter, we would start seeing cases rise. So, that being said, we went ahead and put in an intercession week immediately after the winter break because based on information that we had then, but now we have more updated information from the CDC, the COVID-19 incubation period is last five to seven days after that initial exposure. So, I want you to take into consideration that that intercession week, we have, we are going to use that intercession week to move all learning off-district. It'll be virtual for the students that are selected by each campus to participate in intercession. But it will be virtual so that we're able to reduce the interaction between adults and kids that week. Would also allow us to provide a 10-day incub, or a 10-day period between January 1st and January 11th, which is the first day students come back. So, I want you to think about it just from a purely personal place. You know, most of us party on January 1st. You know, New Year's, and then everybody stays together on the 1st. That's typically what's happened. I'm hoping people don't do that, but I want to be a realist here, too, because not just our parents, let's be honest. This has happened with a lot of employees, too. And so, if the first is when people are getting together, then there's a 10-day window for campus-based personnel to be away from students and for students to be away from school, too. So, we believe that will assist us in making sure that if anything does arise and when we return, we continue with our testing and we're able to catch that before, before anything happens. So, I want you to know, we're being very proactive. We have the same thought process for spring break, which will come in March. There's an intercession week after spring break, too. And so, we'll reassess. And if we're in a place where we need to use intercession again to keep students and school-based individuals separate from each other, then we will definitely do that. So, I want you to just, I'm sharing that with you because I want you to know that we are thinking about these things. And as always, your feedback is always welcome. And so, you, you have access to my email, and you can send me any information that you may have that you feel that I need to consider, and many of you have again. And so, this is, this is the, the other, the other things that we are considered, considering. As I said before, we've been proactive in the steps we take in the school. We've been proactive in how we developed EIST district calendar. And I ask you to assist us because administration, central office, campus leadership, we can't do this alone. And so, we need your help, and I ask you for it yet again, and we'll continue to ask you for it because, as always, we will get through this. We will continue to move forward. We will continue to do all the things we know that are within guidelines to continue to support the education of kids and also the safety of staff and our scholars as well. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Chavez, who's going to have a discussion with you on high-quality instruction and where we are there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time this evening. I want to cover a couple of items regarding our instruction and where we stand at this time. Ms. McCulloughs? Here's a description of our ADA, average daily attendance by campus. And I've highlighted in the yellow three columns. The columns represent this year, 2021, last year, 1920, and the year before, 1819. And it has as of the, of the December 5th date. So, these are very, very recent. As we go down, we can see that in some cases, for example, the high schools and a couple of the middle schools, we've experienced an increase in our average daily attendance. And as we go further down, we see that we've rather dropped in several areas. And if you look at the very bottom, we can see that we're leveling out at a 93.5 year-to-date, with last year being at 93.4. So, that's a positive piece, next slide. However, if we look at our enrollment as of December 4th, we can see that our enrollment numbers have increased dramatically at the high schools compared to last year. As we go down, we see that the opposite occurs as we go down. However, Stafford Elementary has seen an increase and Loma Park has maintained parity from last year. However, if we go down to the very bottom, we notice that last year, we were at 9871 for our enrollment, and this year, we're sitting at approximately 9154. That is a huge difference in comparison. So, these are some pieces that I wanted to share with you, just looking at sheer numbers. Ms. McCulloughs? The other piece is the leadership team decided to look at surveys and survey our students, teachers, and parents. We did this previously, and if you can see one particular piece here, which comes from our student survey, is how would you like school to look like in second semester come January 11th? Check, call, and apply. Responses range from "I'd like to be on campus" to "I'd like to be on campus and change classes" in the orange. In the green, "I'd like to continue staying in class." And the red, "I'd like to be remote," which accounts for 42% of the responses. Purple response is "I'd like to come twice a week," or through our hybrid, Monday, Tuesday, and/or, or rather, Wednesday, Thursday. As we can see, a majority of the students would like to come back in some capacity or another. Ms. McCulloughs? Here is the beginning of the year, M-Class District Reading Assessment. And this gives us a glance of what we commonly know as the summer slide since we're taking the assessment at the beginning of the year. However, this year, it was more than the summer. Our students have been out since April, and we can see that there is a dramatic number of individuals who are well below benchmark in the red for grades K through 3, a critical time where our students do learn to read, and below benchmark in the yellow. So, in this case, I'd like to say that we're at a deficit here simply because of the time away from school. And that was back in September 29th. Next slide. As we look at the grade levels and the percent failing semester to cycle ones, we notice that in 6th through 12th grade, we have varying levels of failures. In this case, the grand total to the right gives us an average of about 46% failing. We've done further analysis to look at what number of students are failing, two or more classes and three or more. And those numbers are being shared with principals. Next slide. So, we then looked at a number of students failing in terms of their instructional model, whether it's onsite, represented by CMP for campus, hybrid, HYB, and remote, RMT. We have on the bottom axis the grade 6 through 12, and we have the relative numbers of our students who are failing, cycle 2. So, we can see that in the remote section, across the board, starting in 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, 10th, 11th, and 12th, even at that number, we see a large, in some cases, more than 100% or double, or sometimes triple, the numbers that are failing. So, this gives us an idea. It was, it was actually a question from one of our board members who had asked, what is the relative failure rates after we shared those, that diagram, that chart that we shared previously? Next slide. So, now that we've shared where our students are in a very broad sense in terms of failures and reading levels, I'd like for us to now look at positivity rates. This particular COVID-19 cases in Bear County schools is a breakdown of the number of students, or rather, students, teaching staff, non-teaching staff, by grade levels, elementary, middle school, high school, and other, and by district classification, public and private, and then the number of outbreaks. These numbers here represent as of the middle of November. And we're taken by our San Antonio Government Metropolitan Health Group, as you can see by the logo on the bottom left. Next slide, please. Dr. Hernandez shared this particular slide from Metro Health that we increased dramatically from 11, this particular middle slide, we were at 10%. Then, we went to approximately 9.2 and then jumped up dramatically to 15.7, 6.5% less. So, as San Antonio and Bear County address COVID, this is some of the highest numbers that we've seen this month to date. Next slide, please. Based on the positivity rate data that we receive from Metro Health, it provides ZIP codes. So, we looked at the ZIP codes in Edgewood ISD, and therefore, 78226, 78227, 78228, and 78237. And those are the relative positive rates based on the number of positive cases versus the population in the area in the ZIP code. And we came to 5.5% for Edgewood overall. If we go to the next slide, please. This side, we're going down on a microscopic level to look at our Edgewood's staff and student positivity rate from August to present, and the present is 112820. Actually, we have the latest one that we put in just a while ago that takes us up to December 6th. If you look on the X, on the Y-axis, we have a total of 15 percentage points. That's very similar to what we see with the city of San Antonio, sitting at 15.8%. Here, in the blue, we see positivity rate for staff, noting that this past week, we had one of 1.5%. We look at the orange line, that is a positivity rate for our students. We can see that the students are well below the staff rate. Next slide, please. I want to share with you some guidance that came from the Texas Education Agency, which was guidance on failures and absences for virtual students. In light of the failures that are occurring statewide, as well as, of course, our absences statewide, the agency put, allowed districts to discontinue remote instruction for those students who are failing or who are absent. And this chart here outlines the steps in order to take that, that measure. So, if districts decide to remove remote instructions for individual students, we must submit an attestation to TEA. Our second step is to look at those students who have a failing grade below a 70 or students who have three or more unexcused absences. Even as I mentioned previously, if we look at students who have two or even three or more absences, those numbers are high. Step three, we must notify the parents two weeks prior to the students returning to campus. Now, parents who receive this notice have, may, may agree to send their child to school, especially in the high schools, we're looking at this for high school students in lieu of, or not in lieu, but given the challenges for graduation, those parents may agree to send their child to high school or they may appeal in one of two ways, by submitting a medical exemption or by requesting a transition meeting. That transition meeting will be held in advance, three days' notice to the parents. If a parent does not appeal or the transition meeting decides students can't be successful learning from home, then the district may require the student to transition to on-campus learning. It is the belief that administration believes that some of our students are failing three or more classes. These are students who are failing three or more classes that are for graduation credit at the high school. And we know that as time comes by, passes, their graduation is in danger simply because they're unable to garner those credits. There have been many stop measures that teachers have put in place, providing that instruction, one-on-one tutoring, remote tutoring. We've also used tutor.com and other, other measures, visits to home, visits to the students, offering incentives and the like. But nonetheless, we have students who, at the end of this semester, will record a failing grade for their graduation classes. So, we're looking, next, click on the next button. No, go back, please. So, our projected date for high school students to return from remote learning, we're anticipating, it's going to be January 13th, 2021. That particular day falls on a Wednesday. And why Wednesday? Well, because we want Monday and Tuesday to outfit our teachers, to give them information about what that And why Wednesday? Well, because we want Monday and Tuesday to, uh, outfit our teachers, to give them information about what that bell schedule may look like. And other information. During that time, our students will be in remote learning until that time. And, um, we will be providing them instruction on technology and other pieces and also safety protocols. Thank you very much. Uh, again, please post any questions you have in your question and answer piece. Dr. Hernandez?
It'll be myself. Thank you, Phil.
Yes, uh, thank you, Ms. McCulloughs. You keep going.
Thank you, Ms. McCulloughs.
Thank you. So next we will have Ms. Trevino. Just a quick reminder, if you are putting, um, questions in the Q and A. If we do not get to them today, they will be, um, collected. And as long as you have your name on there, we will collect the information and put them in a, um, Excel spreadsheet and then send them out to you. So Ms. Trevino, you're next.
Yes, good evening, Edgewood family. Just want to take a few minutes to, um, just update the team on, uh, some of our contact tracing protocols that we're using. Um, our F C C R A act that we have that is, um, coming up to expire. And then also our Edgewood ISD health can give you an update on where we are with that. Next slide. So for contact tracing, I know we have had, um, some questions as far as contact tracing and how individuals are actually being asked to quarantine. So to the left, what you will see is that we have an individual, um, in the orange sweater that has tested positive for, um, COVID nineteen at that time. Had a meeting with the individual in the green sweater, um, so that meeting was held for twenty minutes. That would be considered individual that had primary contact with someone who was exposed, who would who actually tested positive for COVID nineteen. That individual would be asked to quarantine. Of course, prior to being informed that the individual that they were meeting with tested positive. The individual over to the right-hand side throughout the day may have met with another individual. Um, but being that that second individual that they met with did not have direct contact with the individual that actually tested positive. That individual would be considered secondary contact and that individual would not be asked to quarantine. So when we contact trace, we were only asking the individual who had primary contact with the individual that tested positive. Hope that helps answer some questions. I know there's, um, there's a lot of, um, questions and some concerns that come up as far as individuals that are being asked to quarantine. So when we do the contact tracing and we're asking the questions of our individuals, of course, we're asking if you've been in close contact. More than six, closer than six feet, more than fifteen minutes. Um, and we are asking those individuals that have tested positive, who they've had that type of contact with. Those individuals that have primary contact are those individuals that will be asked to quarantine. If for some reason, an individual that was a primary contact went and had another meeting. That second person did not have direct contact with the individual that tested positive. So just wanted to make sure that I could clarify that, um, for individuals, because I think sometimes, um, there's some misinterpretation about that. But please, again, if you have any questions, please feel free to put them in the chat. I just wanted to give a visual so that we understood kind of where we were at with contact tracing. This is another primary reason why we're wanting to make sure, um, that our safety protocols are being, um, followed. Uh, as far as wearing a mask, face shields, um, available to you, if you could wear that. I will say, we did have an individual that because they were wearing a mask and a face shield. It really limited our number of individuals that had to be quarantined. Um, so that really helped and and, uh, we 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 noticed that it went probably from having an exposure of. Anywhere from, you know, seventy to eighty individuals down to probably ten, um, because an individual was wearing a mask and, uh, was following safety protocols. So please make sure that that, and we will continue following our, um. Our, uh, protocol of not having face-to-face meetings. We're minimizing campus visits by all staff. Um, I know the memo went out before Thanksgiving. We will continue that. There'll be another memo coming out. And if you are to have face-to-face meetings or you are, um, having to go to a campus. We're asking that you contact the school chiefs prior to doing so, because we are really trying to minimize the exposure of our students while they're here on campus. We're also asking the social gatherings be kept to a minimum as far as lunch, team meetings, anything on campus, if you can please minimize those social gatherings as well. Thank you, Ms. McCulloughs. Next slide. Also wanted to remind, um, the Edgewood team that the Family First Coronavirus Act is due to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So all, all leave right now that we are using for COVID leave, um, if you're asked to quarantine and you're being, you're being asked to stay home. The leave will expire on December thirty-first. This is a federal act that came up. Um, this is not an Edgewood or a San Antonio. This is federal. But as of right now, this will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So I wanted to make sure that individuals were aware of that. Um, because after December thirty-first, any leave that we take, um, is going to be our personal leave. And this is, like I said, guidance that came from our federal government, but I wanted to make sure that we were upfront and transparent with individuals and letting them know that this is due to expire December thirty-first. Now, will it, will it be extended? I don't know. At this point, we have not gotten any new information. But just wanted to be very upfront and transparent with our employees that it will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Next slide. So just to give you an update on the health clinic, we are still working with university health system, trying to make sure that we get, um, the best, um, memorandum of understanding. In an agreement to make sure that we are providing everything that we can to our employees to make sure that we're utilizing the services. Currently, what we're looking at is the location is off nine eleven Enrique Parreira Parkway. This is a location. This is a visual of the actual building where we are looking to have our clinic. Um, the operations are Monday through Friday from seven forty-five to four o'clock. We are working with the university health system to get some designated time slots for our employees. That if for some reason in the morning they get up, they don't feel well, they want to go directly to the clinic so they can be seen. We're looking to get that so that we can have some priority times, um, over individuals. Once they show up, they can be seen, um, a little bit quicker than the non-peak times. So we're working on some of those details and we will have more information for you to come in the coming months. Next slide. So with the clinic, what this will do, what this will help our employees is that they will not have a co-pay. If they come to our E I S D clinic, um, they will not have a co-pay. Um, different from when they go to their primary care and urgent care or specialist, you normally have a co-pay. Um, if you come to this clinic, you will not get a co-pay. The district is actually picking up the costs of the employees, uh, when they come to visit the clinic. Right now, we're looking at making sure that we we're assigning right now two thousand visits. Anything after the two thousand visits, we will be billed for the, uh, co-pay. And that that again is something that the district is picking up. We're hoping here this with this will save time for our employees. It's located in the district. We're looking to see that we can actually get them in to be seen during their lunch or during their conference time, so they don't have to take time. So we're trying to make sure that we minimize, um, you know, the time that they have to be out to be seen. So we can provide them a better opportunity to be back in the classroom and hopefully a better opportunity for them to get really what they need as far as the medical services needed for employees. Next slide. Lastly, what we have is this clinic will be, just by going to your primary care, you will get your treatment. If you need some prescriptions, they will be able to give you those. It's going to be considered a minor urgent care. Um, we also have any annual physicals, wellness screenings. Preventative health screenings, blood draws for clinical labs. So these services will be provided, um, at this clinic for our employees. So again, this is just an added benefit that we think will be, um, will be a bonus and a plus for our employees. To make sure that we can get them the the services that they need and make sure that they're able to get in and out of the clinic. And yet still not be able, not have to pay any co-pay where the district will be providing that for for the employees. I believe that concludes. I just want to say thank you to everyone. Uh, please, if you have any questions on any of the items that I addressed, please feel free to put them in the Q and A so that we can get you some responses. Thank you, Ms. McCulloughs.
Dr. Hernandez, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just want to keep reminding everybody because I'm I'm following the Q and A. Um, please keep at, if you put anything in the chat, we won't be able to capture that after the meeting ends. Put it in the Q and A because I'd like to answer. I don't just want to answer questions for one person. I think when you ask something, it's going to help everybody. So if you put it in the Q and A, Region Twenty is going to send that to us and we'll be able to do it, uh, F A Q. And send that out to you before we go to the, uh, winter break. So please help us help you by sending us those questions, um, so we can get them answered. Thank you.
Thank you. I was just about to say that. Um, all right. So here we have, um, if you recall, Ms. Libby Spears came to speak with us during convocation. And we've had monthly sessions, um, with Libby Spears regarding EQ. What I just wanted to let you know is these sessions are still ongoing. We have one this Thursday, yesterday. Um, and we're doing this to support you all, to support each and every one of you. If you haven't attended, please, please do. Um, I've had people message me afterwards saying how this has helped them, um, internally with some things that they're struggling with. So again, this is here for you all. We will also be having Instagram Live tomorrow. We're kind of doing like a twelve days of Christmas. Um, and how to be mindful during the holiday season. So a few of y'all were on yesterday and watched on Instagram Live. We'll be having one of those tomorrow at seven and everybody should have received an email for the, um, with the Zoom link for Thursday's. Um, one hour power hour with, um, Ms. Libby. So one thing I want to, uh, remind everybody is we are still deep cleaning. We are deep cleaning on this three-month schedule and we have daily treatments. Every single day happening through our custodial department, like Dr. Hernandez mentioned earlier. Um, we are reaching out to our operations division, bus drivers and other operations folks, so they can come in and help us. With making sure we're sanitizing each and every single day. So that is still ongoing. That will not stop. Um, and if we're doing a deep, deep cleaning, those are done in the evenings. So then the cleaning supplies, um, that they use are not allowed to be when we're in there. So just wanted to make sure everybody was still aware of that. Also, um, if you all recall, um, in the September Town Hall, Mr. Williams spoke about, um, Edgewood ISD purchasing the Murph thirteen air filters. This is, uh, an upgraded air filter from your everyday, uh, air filter and it allows for it to, um. Stop particles that are coming in and it says it helps with any kind of sicknesses. So that has all been in place in all our campuses and offices throughout Edgewood ISD. If you have not received a well-ocean at your campus, these are coming. I know some, some schools have already received the well-oast stations. But please be advised, we are still in the process of getting these are coming in. As you can imagine, everywhere across the country is trying to get these for their businesses and their their classrooms and their campuses. So these are coming if you haven't received those as of yet. Again, prevention, doing our part, we can't stress this enough, wearing your mask, washing your hands, using hand sanitizer, making sure you're social distancing. If we all do our part, we can all help slow the spread. Again, no potlucks, no baby showers, no social gatherings, um, make sure your mask is covered on your face properly. It covers your nose and your mouth. Make sure you social distance. Again, if we stay safe, we stay diligent and we all work together, um, to stay COVID negative. We'll all be able to help. And again, Dr. Al is mandatory. Like Dr. Hernandez said, um, we're trying to do everything we can here in the district. Athletics will be prohibiting everybody, just to let you know, athletics will be prohibiting fan attendance for all indoor events. And that'll actually start today. I believe there was a basketball, um, game this evening, so there is no fans for any indoor, um, sporting events. And we are going to be capping fan attendance to twenty-five percent at all outdoor events. Um, that'll start this week as well. And next we have Mr. Nestor.
Good evening, everybody. Very excited to talk to you a little bit about the innovation that is going on in our district. Uh, that has been happening and will continue to happen as we move forward, even amidst all of this wonderful sanitation, uh, with COVID. Can you go ahead and move forward? All right. So we have a technology refresh, uh, that is happening or will be happening as we move forward. So we're really excited that we already have one-to-one devices in our students' hands. Uh, we're also working on ensuring that we have connectivity for all of those students. We have hotspots available that lots of which have already been checked out. To ensure that those students have those, uh, that connection, uh, with the device as well as our matched network. That is available for students to be able to have access, but first and foremost, they have to have the device. So we had, we purchased additional laptops and iPads in this year in order to ensure that students all had access, uh, respectively to the device that they needed. And as we move forward, we will continue to purchase, uh, laptops for eighth graders on an annual basis. So that eighth graders would receive a new laptop, uh, with the idea of continuing to use that same laptop. Throughout the remainder of their secondary career. Uh, and of course, we were, we've already purchased, um, the eight hundred additional laptops for next year for that refresh. They haven't come in yet. There's, you know, a lag time with all of that. Uh, but then there's an additional laptops for replacements of other damaged and older devices. Um, as well as we have, uh, the refresh already built in, the purchase already occurred for our fifth generation iPads. That before too long will be outdated and no longer able to update. Once we receive these iPads and we update over the course of next semester in the summer, all of our iPads will either be sixth gen or seventh gen iPads. Uh, and able to function for many years to come. Go ahead and move to the next slide. All right. Specific to innovation. So one more slide for me there. All right. So just I mentioned earlier that even amidst all of this, uh, crazy COVID business that's happening, yes, innovation is still happening. Uh, and then just to kind of take you back, provide you a little bit of context, uh, and talk about the journey of how we got here. You might be asking yourself, wow. How does all of this innovation and all these school choice options really fit into the overall district plan? Well, first and foremost, I want to take you back to the year two thousand seventeen, not nineteen fifty, but just two thousand seventeen. And let you know that our board actually poli- published, uh, policy A E local. Which refers to our education philosophy. In that philosophy, they adopted and opted in to be a part of a network. Provided by the Texas Education Agency called the Systems of Great Schools. And the Systems of Great Schools network really lives to support school districts. To ensure that all students are seated at A and B campuses. So with the onset of that and working with all of this, uh, network of systems of great schools. Our district, uh, launched into researching, determining, okay, how can we actually turn all the schools around to ensure that all of our students really are sitting in those A and B seats? Through all of that research birthed our innovation zone. I'm sure most of you are very familiar with the graphic that has our five innovation zones. And so from that innovation zone idea, and on top of that, we decided that we wanted to ensure that we were not only transforming the education. That the students were receiving, but also providing that much-needed choice that families were looking for. So we provide choice by design here in Edgewood and of course, transformation through technology and innovation. So just to kind of take you back on the journey that we've gone through over the course of the last few years. Last year was year one of our innovation and we launched Gardendale Early Learning Program powered by Pre-K for SA. Been a great partnership thus far, as well as we, um, launched our Brentwood Steam School of Innovation. Started with grade six and then this year we moved it up to grade seven and of course, la- next year, we will move into grade eight. Next slide, please. So in year two, this year, even amidst all of, uh, the COVID pandemic, we did still launch Peralis Steam School, uh, of education there. Uh, coupled with the school turnaround model that is ACE. Uh, as well as we have an operating partner working with us. I'm sorry, not not at Peralis. I apologize. That was the last one on Gus. At Gus Garcia, we have an operating partner that is working with us that is Texas A and M, who also has the ACE model. And that is our first campus that launched in the public service zone. Las Palmas launched this year specifically in grades K two, starting our leadership school for girls. Um, and then Burleson School, notice it's not just a program anymore. It's an actual school starting this year. Uh, and we have a partnership there in Texas A and M. And then, as I mentioned a minute ago, Peralis, of course, launched having the ACE model as well, um, and it is in the STEAM zone. Looking forward into next year, next slide. We are looking to launch at Kennedy, a pathway to technology, early college high school. Really excited about this opportunity for our getos. If you're familiar with early college high schools, uh, that where students are able to earn an associate's, very similar. The difference is, is this associate's is specific to applied science. So we've been planning, uh, ever, actually ever since the beginning of last year and acquiring partners. Because with a pathway to technology, early college high school, you work with industry partners, higher ed, and of course, the school district. So that will be launching next year. We're launching our Winston Steam School of Innovation there. In our STEAM zone and that will be in grades three through five only, grades three through five at Winston. Because all of the pre-K two students will be at Gardendale. So those will be sister schools in that students would potentially start a pre-K two at Gardendale. And then transition to three through five at Winston. Stafford is going to be our. Stafford is going to be our elementary school that is going to focus on fine arts. And so that is going to launch next year. And then last, but certainly not least, Royce Narrows will be the brother sister school, partner school to Las Palmas as we are going to be launching our Leadership School for Boys, beginning in grades K2 there at Royce Narrows. Next slide. All right. And you probably heard me mention a couple of times that we have some partnerships. We have Pre-K for SA currently at Gardendale. We have Texas A&amp;M, both at Burleson School of Innovation as well as Texas A&amp;M University, Gus Garcia University School. We have Texas A&amp;M there. You might be asking yourself, well, why in the world are we even doing these partnerships? What's, what's up with that? Well, I mentioned that we have these innovation zones and the primary purpose for launching any type of innovation really and truly is to bring about change and ensure that those students are seated in high quality seats. It's all about school improvement. But why the partnership? Well, really the whole purpose of the partnership is to accelerate that school improvement. We want that to move even faster. Well, how could it possibly move faster? Well, if you look on the screen, you see a few reasons here of how that might possibly happen. First and foremost, in the bottom left, you see expertise. We know that when we look at working with specific partners, they're bringing to the table expertise in areas that we're needing in order to launch that innovation. When we said, hey, we want to focus on a really high quality early learning program, Pre-K for SA, very natural choice. They're bringing in that expertise. In the upper left, you'll see a lot of symbols there. I'm sure many of you are having maybe even a visceral response to some of those symbols. Wait a minute, I'm not a Ford person. I'm a Chevy person. We only buy Toyota. Or IBM, no, why isn't there an Apple sign up there? We're all Apple in this district or in my household. Those symbols mean something to you. And so what a partner brings with them is brand recognition. Brand recognition can help you in a lot of areas with additional sourcing of tools and resources. But it can also help us with our recruiting efforts. As you saw that in quite a few areas that we're declining in our enrollment. And that's not just because of COVID. We've actually been declining previous to this. And so we're really looking towards working with these partners and ensuring that we're not only providing a high quality learning program, but we're also bringing the resources that they have to the table and brand recognition to increase our student enrollment. Most of these organizations are existing organizations. And so they're bringing with them their already tools and resources that they have at their disposal. We now will have those tools and resources at our disposal as a school district ultimately for the benefit of the students. And last but certainly not least is funding. We heard Mr. Chavez speak to average daily attendance. That is how our school funding model is currently built here in Texas at the current moment. And so we have a standard amount of funds that come with every single student. When we enter into these partnerships, we actually receive additional funds. It's not a lot, but it is an additional amount. Every penny helps when it comes to educating our kids and providing the best education that we possibly can. Beyond the basic funding, there are lots and lots of grants that we have the opportunity to apply for. And typically what's been happening in the state of Texas is that we actually are receiving more funds for those campuses if we're in an operating partnership. The example that I've been giving this year is that we previously had for Gus Garcia, a school action fund grant that was in the planning phase last year. We applied to continue that this year. Had we just continued to operate as usual and working with Gus Garcia ourselves without a partner. And had we received that grant, we would have received approximately $750,000. But because of the partnership, that amount actually doubled and we received $1.5 million in order to support all of the excellent work that's happening at Gus Garcia University School. So that's just one example. There are plenty of others that as these partnerships are rolling out, lots of new grants and opportunities, working with philanthropic people is happening. So there's a lot of additional resources, both from the organization itself as well as outside of the organization that we're able to tap into when we have these partnerships. All right. And so we have these partnerships. We have these great innovation zones. But what, now what? Well, the idea is that we put power back into the hands of the families. We educate the families. We show them what's at their disposal. And how do we do that? Through lots and lots of meetings. Dr. Adamas has been really great in having his platicas. Unfortunately, we can't really go out to the communities right now, but instead we've been doing a lot of virtual options. So we had our virtual school choice fair several weeks ago. We have continued to have additional meetings with parents in communities specific to certain innovation schools. And we're going to continue to do that in January. The schools have already penciled in all of their discovery nights that will be happening in January. It's going to give every campus an opportunity to really show what shines, what is all about their innovation that they're having on their campus in order to really recruit. Because we're in this really competitive world right now. We've got to recruit these kids to come to our schools and show them why they really want to come to our schools. What's going to be the benefit for the, each of those families' children in our buildings? And so we're able to do this through the next slide. We finally have online our Smart Choice application. So this Smart Choice application, if you haven't had the opportunity to check it out, you go to our district homepage, you click on enrollments and there it is. You have, it takes about 10 minutes to fill out this application. So if you have your own children, please take advantage of this. We are encouraging and we want everybody to apply. All of our students to apply. We might be asking, why in the world do we need everybody to apply? Well, I've mentioned earlier that we're looking at all of our enrollment trends. I saw some questions in the chat about staffing. And so how can we possibly predict where we're going to need additional units or which units at which campus? Well, this is how we're going to be able to do it. So when the enrollment period or the application period closes in February, we'll give the parents an opportunity to officially accept after the lottery is run by the first week in March. And then we will have very good numbers to determine exactly how many kids have chosen to go to Las Palmas. How many kids have chosen to go to Brentwood? We're going to know all of that information. How many kids want to be a part of the PTAC at JFK? So we're going to have all that information at our hand and armed with that information, we can make really great staffing choices for each of those campuses as well as budgeting choices for the following year. Beyond the actual application, gone are the days of the paper and pencil having to do everything by hand enrollment registration process. So once we finish with the application, then parents select and finalize their selection. Then they're going to actually be able to do all of their enrollment, taking pictures of birth certificates and uploading them digitally. Nothing will have to happen on paper, shot records. Everything can be done on your phone, on your computer. Everything can be done digitally. Beyond this and parents being able to do it just at home, we're actually going to host several nights where we're going to be able to walk families through the application enrollment process at various of the campuses. And those dates are yet to be published, but they are coming very, very soon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nestor, so much for that great information. One thing I actually wanted to bring up before I give it back to Dr. Adama is as we're talking about innovation and partnerships, I actually would like to say, if you haven't seen Twitter today or our social media platforms, Burleson today had a great event happening. So it is the first cohort of our Burleson 18 plus students that have actually signed to go to college at Texas A&amp;M San Antonio. So we have five of our 18 plus students at Burleson. They are now leaving the nest and they are joining Texas A&amp;M San Antonio as a first cohort for the two classes. So they are pioneering this for the entire Edgewood community and for the entire Bear County. So I just wanted to make sure to give them a little shout out because this is an amazing opportunity for our students. And it's their next chapter of, of their lives. So Dr. H, you, you're next.
All right, guys. And let me, let me say, before I didn't make it explicit, that is a direct result of the 1882 partnership that we have between Texas A&amp;M San Antonio and the Burleson School of Innovation. And so we would expect and we will continue to advocate for more agreements of that nature in the future. But we have great partners in Texas A&amp;M San Antonio and our other partners like Pre-K for SA. And so thank you, Ms. Alda, for sharing that. But we're about to close. I have the last two slides, two important slides that I want to share with you as we begin to close out. Ms. Alda, if you'll go ahead and go to the next slide. The last thing, the next, the last thing I want to show or discuss with you guys is what is it that I intend to be doing in the spring in terms of, as the superintendent of the district as the legislative session begins? So I want to start with the picture on the left. Obviously, the legislative session begins at the end of January. My role as of now is, my understanding is there will not be folks allowed into the Capitol, but most of that work will be happening virtually. But I know I've already been approached about speaking on behalf of some of the work here in San Antonio in terms of funding. So if you look at the next picture down, down, it says holds harmless. And so I want to be specific about what that means. So obviously our funding is tied directly to student attendance. And so right now we know we have had many challenges from the very beginning back in March when we had to go virtual and making sure that the digital divide was something that wasn't going to be a problem for us, but obviously it was here in Edgewood and many districts. And that we actually as a school district were able to not only connect, because quite frankly, that's actually one of the discussions I plan to have with our folks is clearly defining what digital connectedness means. I think the state needs a formal definition of that because there are, there are, the state is expecting us to use our PMS reporting to report who is or who isn't digitally connected. So I think the state, one of the things I'm going to advocate for is define that for us because it is not just about getting on the internet. There are varying levels of speed on connectivity. And some districts have high-speed internet, some districts don't. We have hotspots, but let's be honest, I can think of a few, few homes in our district that have four or five kids sitting on the same hotspot. That is difficult. So rather than me, I'm not letting the state off the hook on that. I think they have to put in money so that we, we put more money into the digital divide that exists, not just in Bear County, but across the state. So that's going to be part of my advocacy. Continuing on with that is also that whole harmless that we do not get penalized in our budget projections for next year. I will tell you right now, I cannot give you a straight answer on what that's going to look like. Right now, the governor is expecting that students be in school. That is not something that I can decide, but it is definitely something that I can challenge, both privately and publicly through our legislative agenda, which we are going to take to the board in January and then push out to our different elected officials such as Senator Menendez, Representative Minjares and Lopez, even our other representatives in the city like Diego Vernal, Justin Rodriguez. As many elected officials that can sound the alarm that to expect certain things to happen in the middle of this pandemic is definitely something that the governor and our NTA have to really, really listen to what we're saying to them for those of us that are on the frontline. And then one of the other conversations I plan to have is around STAR. I've made it very public, both on my, on my, on my, on my platforms, that I am against the STAR test being used as an accountability measure. I think it needs to be used as a diagnostic measure, preferably that we don't have it to begin with. But if we're going to, I think we need to be very smart about how we advocate. So as the superintendent, I will be advocating that if we are to, to do this, that we use it as a diagnostic and that is I do not believe that it is fair to school districts and or teachers to use that in any other manner. So I want you to know what I'm going to be doing and I'm going to be coming to you to report to you on what I will be doing at the, with regards to Austin and then what I'm hearing. So I want to keep you in that loop. And so that's my big ticket agenda, but here's what I also want to do before you change it, Ms. Alda. Hold on. So the other part of tonight was to also take us back to the fact that regardless of everything that's going on right now in Edgewood. I've always tried to advocate for the human part of what we do. Some days I feel like I'm doing a good job on it. Some days I don't. I'm human too, just like you. But I know that right now, this time of year, pandemic or not, these are very special days for a lot of us. I know many of you have memories of growing up at home with, with this, in this season with the holidays. A lot of you I know have reached out to me and do not think that I don't care you in my heart when you tell me how you're struggling financially. Some of you might be listening to me. I'm not going to tell, I don't believe in telling a person specific business, but I will tell you. Those things I carry very heavy with me. And so I try to use the influence that I've been given to advocate with my board of trustees. And with that being said, for this holiday season, although you can go ahead and change it. I, we are going to be offering all of our employees, uh-oh, what happened? There you go. All employees on December the 18th will be receiving $500 in your paycheck. This is the, this is the board and myself's way of saying thank you. I, I would call this hero pay, if you want to call it hero pay. It's my way of saying thank you for everything you have been dealing with. I know it's not, definitely not a lot of money, but it is, it is my way and our way of saying, thank you. We love, we love you. We love what you're trying to do for our kids. We don't take it lightly. You are the frontline workers. And you are important to what we're doing here in Edgewood. And so I hope that you will graciously accept this blessing that's being given to you in the most wholehearted way that I know to do for you. And if we have any subs on here, because I think we have to see everybody for the human part of the work we do. I've advocated so that all of our subs who've worked with us at least 20 days, they don't even have to be consecutive days. Just 20 days that we also include them and that we give them a $250 contribution to them for this, for this month. And so I hope you will begin to share that information with everyone that you know. Know that we do this again with the most humble heart. And I want to thank the senior leadership team too also because they always advocate for the well-being of our, of our employees. And so Ms. Alda, that brings us to an end and I will turn it back over to you and thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Nestor wanted to make a quick announcement regarding district phones. So let, let me let him take the lead really quick and then I will close out.
I am very excited to let you know that the installation, configuration and all things really technological and cool with regards to our phone system is fully underway. Starting tomorrow, not only will your new phones continue to function, but we're actually going to have new external numbers. Very important to separate external versus internal. So if you're in your classroom and you're calling anybody within the district, your current extensions will remain the same. No change there at all. However, should your family members be calling the campus or the parents be calling the campus or vendors be calling some district personnel, there are new, what we call direct dial numbers. A direct dial number is a number that you can access from the outside. Most employees do not have direct dial numbers. Just to give you an example, we have approximately, I think it's around 1,800, 1,600 employees in the district. We only have 400 direct dial lines and many of those are actually fax lines. So there's very few direct dial lines. But starting tomorrow, I guess the very important number that everybody would, would be thinking of is 210-444-4500 will no longer be our number. It will now be 210-898-2000. And so all of that will be published tomorrow. It will be posted on our website, will be posted on social media. We will change all of the campus website information to update the new phone numbers. In addition to that, I want to let you know that we will have a recording posted on the old numbers that will be there for approximately a month, allowing families to know that there is a new number and where they can find that number.
Let me, let me add to what Mr. Nestor said. Michelle, because you're the first one who asked on the chat about phones. Thank you for asking that for everyone. I am going to ask Mr. Nestor to write something up and include it in the FAQ. So because I know there's, not everyone's on here and this would be good information to share. And then we'll also have something for principals, but we'll include it in the FAQ. So thank you.
All right. So that is the end of our presentation this evening. Thank you much. Thank you, everybody, for joining our town hall. Like I said, if you have any Q and As or questions that you would like to ask, please put them in the Q and A box right now before we close out. That way I'll be able to gather, I'll be able to download the information and gather it, then send it out before the holiday break. But again, thank you so much for being in attendance. We know that it takes an hour out of your evening away from family, but the information, we definitely wanted to make sure we shared it with you. So thank you for all you do and I will play some music before I close it out.